Good evening, and welcome to the Monday, November 16, 2015, meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Sean Heiner?
Here.
Mayor for day Lauren Garick?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Waldeck?
Here.
Alderman Beidler?
Here.
Alderman Pandalian?
Here.
Alderman Newman?
Here.
Alderman Tac?
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Adelman?
Here.
Alderman Moreno?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Betty. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. First item on the agenda this evening is reports of city officers, and before we go too far, I want to introduce Lauren Grex, who is a freshman at Lake Forest High School, and also a world-class runner, by the way, just in case anybody wants to get any running tips. So I'm going to ask Lauren for the first item on the agenda this evening, if she'll tell us a little bit about the tree lighting.
The annual tree lighting ceremony will take place in Friday, November 27, in Market Square. A Christmas movie at Gordon Community Center, 400 East Illinois Road, 2:30 p.m. A live ice sculpting performance by Art Below Zero in Market Square, 3 p.m. Meet Santa in Market Square, 4 p.m. Caroling by the Lake Forest High Choir, 4:30 p.m. on Western Avenue. Lake Forest Dance Academy Company's performance, 5 p.m. on Western Avenue. And Holiday Lights or Settle Well at 5:15 p.m.
Great. Thank you, Lauren. I'm sensing already my job's at risk. Do you get that sense? Next item on the agenda, item B. Lauren?
Is the 2015 to 2016 Board and Commission Appointments and Reappointments to appoint the Audit Committee, William McFadden from Ward III, and Dan O'Callaghan to appoint as Chairman from Ward I. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Yep.
Third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Nicely done. Thank you. Okay, I can go home now. And that is the end of my agenda items this evening for comments by Mayor. Thanks, Lauren, very much for handling that so well. Item number two on the agenda, comments by City Manager Bob Kylie.
Lauren, could you please handle my report, too, this evening?
And I have nothing to report, so Lauren, if you have nothing, then we move on. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Item number three, comments by council members. The Finance Committee, first item on the agenda is the Elloa Farm Budget Presentation, presented by Finance Committee Chairman George Pandalian. George?
Well, I think I'll invite the members of the Elloa Farm Foundation to come up and make their presentation.
I'm Holly Brown, Chairman of the Elloa Farm Commission. I'm here to recommend approval of the budget for 2016. The budget was prepared by the Elloa Farm Foundation Committee, reviewed by their board, approved by their board, presented to the Finance Committee of the Commission for our review, and in turn, we presented it to the full commission a week or so ago, and they recommended submitting it for approval to all of you. And you can find it in the full detail, but Joanne, if you... Highlights are right here. I think we're showing a modest increase in income, holding expenses flat. If you'd move to the next page. The most important page, I think, is the third page, which shows the healthy cash budget maintained by the foundation. At the end of 2014, about $600,000, should be about $720,000 by the end of this year. And I'll turn it over to Joanne to tell you all the exciting things that are going on at Elloa.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us this opportunity, and I'd just like to try to review our last -- this last year, 2015. We start off every year with our garden market, and like every year, we always have some changes, and this year with great results. Pictured in the center is our new chef, Steve Trappetti, a well-known Chicago five-star chef and restaurateur. He has ramped up our market to a new level. Our mainstay rentals come in all sizes and shapes, from intimate dinners to wedding reception. This year, we are focusing on reaching out to companies, offering a great space for office retreats, which can include breakfasts and lunch. You never know what may -- what you may experience when you visit Elloa Farm. You can catch sandhill cranes grazing in our gardens, or even witness nature's transpiring. As an example, the bees swarming. We had quite a few of them this year.
Wow.
Forever-growing are a variety of our different programs, from young children -- for young children to flower and cooking classes. We have been fortunate to have had a few different Eagle Scout projects this year: composting bins by one, mason bee hives by another, and shelvings for our root cellar. I would be amiss not to mention our recognition to DeeDee Borland this year. Without her, I do not believe there would be a garden, which is the essence of our Where would we be without our volunteers? Many participate all summer and through the fall in the garden, in the market, and even in the kitchen. This picture -- or this slide here shows our holiday market in full swing, coming up. The most exciting news this year is our new greenhouse. We started with the groundbreaking just a few weeks ago and are hopeful for December It's still not too late to help support us in a few different ways. We have turkeys, sides, and pies now available for your Thanksgiving dinner. Our holiday market starts December 4. Come by and purchase your tree, wreaths, gingerbread house, or many other goodies from our kitchen. And new this year is come and celebrate your New Year's Eve at the farm. And finally, please consider a year-end donation to support Elloa Farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or observations? Alderman Beidler?
Joanne, hi. I have a question on actually the first slide that you put up, the one with the numbers.
Sure.
So I'm just -- I'm looking at the fundraising support line, and I'm noticing a fairly substantial jump from '15 to '16, and I'm just wondering, you must be doing some -- you must have a few initiatives up your sleeve. I just wanted to kind of give a little more detail on those.
I'm not ready to go total detail into those, but we are -- have a couple different things that we're kind of pinpointing. We've also increased, I think, in that is our events, and a couple new events which enter into that, too.
Same thing.
Yes.
Okay, okay. But, you know, it is -- it is a -- I noticed that...
It's a jump. I agree. But we're very confident.
You're confident.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Well, then, let me just say, and this might help your bottom line a little, I'm glad you showed the pictures of the gingerbread houses. They are spectacular. We do two every year. My grandchildren probably wouldn't come over to my house at Christmas if I didn't have them, and they pick at them, you know, from the backside and so on. Anyway, they're wonderful. The holiday market, the weekend of the Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth, is unbelievably wonderful, and I urge you all to go. And I didn't know about the turkeys, but that's good to know, too.
Yeah, thank you.
But the holiday market is not to be missed. Okay, and I look forward to your creative fundraising next year.
Thank you.
You wait and watch, yep. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions? Alderman Adelman?
What is it, 15, 20 years ago since Middle Fork Farm was planted and we got Elloa Farm? How long has it been that we've had it?
Well, I haven't been around that long with it, but I think in '98 is when the whole property started getting divided up between the developer, the city, the forest preserve, and open lands.
All right, so it's about 17, 18 years.
Yeah, and my year was 2014, when the city turned over the running of Elloa to the foundation board from the city. So we don't have as many years of comparables as other entities.
Yeah. I just think it's fascinating that the folks who created this back in 1998 had the foresight to set aside what's become a little jewel, and it's really blossoming. It's a phenomenal asset in this community, and I know more and more people who do use it for functions, and even if you don't, the other activities that are going on there are just tremendous. So kudos to our predecessors who had the foresight to create this when that subdivision was planted, and I think you were involved, weren't you?
Yep.
Been around a long time.
There are some members of the City Council that were involved, too. So it's, yeah, it's been great to watch the whole thing come -- especially, I would say, in the last six or seven years. You know, it really went for about a decade where it wasn't 100 percent clear what the mission was and how best to take advantage of the facilities, and somewhere along the way, you know, the garden, I think, was huge, was a huge, you know, that led to a lot of other possibilities. You know, the improvements to the facilities so that it can be used for functions, I mean, that really wasn't possible for a number of years. So it's -- and then, you know, getting the barn put back together again, or whatever that's called, the tool shed, whatever, where the market is, you know, all that.
Megan shed.
It's -- the place looks great.
Thank you.
And then there was finally enough money to get the cupola done and all the -- I mean, really, it's been -- and now to see a $600,000 cash balance, you've got some heavy competition coming up behind you on that front, but, you know, it's...
But you wanted to go first.
But, but, you know...
We're maybe comparatively speaking, too.
Well, just remember where that competition was five years ago. I mean, Elloa never went through anything quite that severe, so...
Exactly.
Any other questions or comments? I actually have a couple of observations, but... Okay, on the income and expense page, I guess this is the same one. If you look at fundraising support, I'm noticing, you know, a pretty healthy jump in annual gifts. It seems like it's sort of moving from one line to another, and I guess I'll share Prue's comments that I'll look forward to the creative ideas that are going to get that done. That's a pretty healthy jump in just sort of annual giving.
Well, we have, yeah.
And then I guess the other thing is, I know from being on the Audit Committee that there is, in fact, a set of financial statements for the foundation, which I think in future years, it would be helpful if that was included in this presentation. You don't necessarily need to go through it, but it's, for those of us who are used to looking at income statements and balance sheets, it's a little easier to follow than the presentation here, so...
Okay, we'll make note of that.
And I know it exists because I've looked at it, so just, you know, slide that into the package, that would be great.
Okay. Do you want to see the one that was given to the Audit Committee this year, or if there is one done in between the two?
I think whatever the most recent -- whatever the most recent thing that's presented to the Audit Committee is, because that's by definition already been reviewed, and the accountants have blessed it and so forth, so that's probably the most relevant document.
Definitely make note.
But...
Any other questions? Questions of Holly, Joanne? Anyone from the public here to comment? If not, given the feedback we've gotten from the council, I'll ask for a motion to recommend the Elloa Farms budget.
So moved.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Pandalian?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you. Congratulations, and I'll echo what Prue said. I'll stop by in two weeks to pick up two gingerbread houses. They look great.
Two is even better.
Yeah, for sure.
Kind of a, you know, a brace.
Well, I'll take little bites of mine, too, so... Thanks so much.
You can have a doghouse this year.
Oh, that's great.
For your dogs.
Terrific.
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Gingerbread doghouse.
Next item on the agenda, the Gordon Community Center Budget Presentation. Again, George Pandalian, and joining us tonight is Peter Cherry from Gordon.
And I'm simply going to turn this over to Peter to present the current status of Gordon.
My eight is done here. I, thank you, I'm Peter Cherry. I am one of the city appointed directors of Gordon Community Centers. You may know, as you may recall, Gordon has a little bit of a different structure than there is while there is the large, at-large community board, which is self-perpetuating. You, or I guess the mayor technically has appointed six of us to be city-appointed directors. Among our other duties, one of our explicit duties is to be the finance committee for Gordon. I'm chairman of that committee, and it's in that capacity that I'm here tonight. The budget that which you have in your package has been reviewed by the Finance Committee. We presented it to the board last Monday night, and it's been passed by the full board as well. It's been quite a year, quite a remarkable year, and we survived, and I think we're all very, very, very proud of it. So if I may proceed, there's a lot going on the outside of Gordon when you drive by it, but there's a lot going on the inside as well. It's been a very exciting time at Gordon for children. But this is a picture of, is a small piece of about 290 kids and their parents who were sitting there several weeks ago for an international -- Children's International Film Festival. They weren't international children, they were local children seeing international film festival, and it was a great hit. Also, it's a great time for adults. This is the Lake Forest Symphony, which has taken up residence here again, and as a matter of fact, they are resident partners on our second-floor offices as well, so the adults are in there as well. And I included this one as well because I think it's fun for all ages. It appears to me the instructor might be having more fun than the kids in this particular photograph. And you can see the very eager parents, the heads of the very eager parents in the foreground. As I said a moment ago, it's been quite a year. The renovation of the entire first floor was completed, and we did it without requiring any debt and with a minimum interruption of our services, which is really quite remarkable. If anybody hasn't been there, I know you've all been there, I assume it's been there, you've all been there since the renovation, but to the public, if you haven't been there, you should, particularly if you've been there before. You really should go because you won't recognize the place, it's quite remarkable. The first four public spaces have been entirely rebuilt. The office area has been made into an office area. The Stewart Room, which has long been there but was falling into disrepair, has been renovated. In addition, the former Green Room, now called the Nagel Family Room, which was really falling into disrepair, has been renovated as well. When we started the project, our architect had a great phrase that he used, and he said our challenge is to transform this building from looking like a elementary school, when we come into it, looking like an elementary school where everybody's in class, which is what it did look like. It doesn't look like that anymore. In addition to the public spaces being done, the Auditorium, which we used to call it, has now been converted into a theater, a wonderful theater, that we can use for plays, concerts, speakers, dances, and of course cinema. I was involved in this project early on, but stepped aside, but one of the challenges we had in rejuvenating the Auditorium and turning it into a theater was a challenge of making it acceptable to a number of different disciplines, things we've listed up here. You couldn't make it just in cinema because then the dancers couldn't use it. You couldn't make it just for sound, I mean, just for music, because then it didn't work for lectures, and so on and so forth. So while there were a few compromises that were made, we feel it came out to be very, 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 very great. It was funded in large part by the enormously generous contribution of Nancy Hughes in the memory of her husband, the director John Hughes, and it's been renamed the John and Nancy Hughes Theater, and we formally opened it about two months ago with a very successful, very successful grand opening, and we've had several events in there since then. I'll come to some of those in a moment. Programs and events last year somehow were actually up 30 percent with all this turmoil going on, but it's a tribute to our staff, led by Brenda Dick, who's with me today, our executive director, that we were able to pull this off. In addition, we, our second floor, as you may know, is where the old classrooms really are, and those are all, with the exception of a couple that we keep for ourselves for meeting rooms, those rooms all upstairs are residential partners of various not-for-profit organizations in and around the city and in Lake County, and that is fully rented at this time, which is great. It's a source of income for us. As we look towards year-end, we're on a 12/31 year, unlike the city, the cash, our cash flow from operations annual giving is going to be a positive $87,000, and in addition to the, all of the expenditures that we made on behalf of the renovation campaign, we also tucked in another $42,000 worth of our own capital expenditures for non-renovation-related activities. Those just go on and on and on. And as I said earlier, all of our offices on the second floor and in the basement, some of those areas, for our collaborative tenants have been, are fully leased as we look forward. So what, if the past is prelude, what do we have to look forward to? Well, the renovation is done. It really wasn't fully done, well, it's never fully done, it seems to go on forever, but it's by, it's really fully done, for all intents and purposes, and ended this summer. And Brenda and her staff, and the board for that matter, are now learning how to live in and to capitalize on these wonderful renovated facilities. And in turn, how are we going to exploit them and do things better? We no longer have to, if you pardon the expression, apologize for the quality of the rental spaces, the aforementioned Stewart Room or the, or the Green Room, now known as the Nagel Family Room. They're first-class, they're top drawer, and we should be very proud of them and need to seek out people, and I might add, pay the proper, pay the proper charge for those two things. We have formed a, or the board has formed a Performing Arts Committee. This is chaired by a board member and has board members on it, but it also has outside members who are interested in music, dance, or they're thespians, or whatever. And we had a report the other night on it, and boy, if enthusiasm could be translated into dollars, this thing is going to be a knockout. They really have a lot of ideas and a lot of excitement. The centerpiece, of course, is the John and Nancy Hughes Theater. Lot of things going on there. The headline would be the film series itself. This was in, this was a contribution that Mrs. Hughes made in addition to the funding for the renovation. They, we're going to have a John Hughes film series, new annual event going on, hopefully forever. It's, we have the money in the bank, it's a restricted fund, and the income for which it's to be used to put on some sort of an annual event, and that is, as you can tell by my hesitation, that's a work in progress, learning to live. We also have a partnership with a, with the Gene Siskel Film Center, which is downtown. We had our first opening a month ago. We're having eight, up to eight monthly films, and the first one was about, well, about five weeks ago, there was another one last week, and success so far. It's really great, and I urge you to keep an eye at the Gordon website or drive by the corner of Illinois and McKinley and see the sign that we have in one a month. There's one coming up in December as well, and that's going to be feature of Nina Simone and her life, which ought to be very, very fascinating to see. I mentioned that we also partnered with the children, to get the children, the Chicago International Children's Film Festival, with a group called Facets, which is another Chicago film organization which we've partnered with before. That was a huge success. They had one of these, one of their showings up here. Something new this year is something we call in the Greater Good Project. This is a combination symposium and workshop for various Lake Forest or Lake County, really, not-for-profits who may need help in areas of everything from governance to fundraising to all the basics. These are small, little operations. It's been funded with a $250,000 grant from the Granger Foundation to be spent in two, in five $50,000 installments over the next five years. Money's in the bank, it's been paid enormously generous, and it will be featured with an annual keynote speaker and with various breakout sessions after that for the various not-for-profits. We're going to continue to have our association with Pasta Performing Arts. Brenda, help me. Oh, she doesn't even remember. Okay. It's been a longstanding, longstanding partnership, and those continue to be successful and is growing forever. And also, we're getting back in the business of having lots of musical performances. So there are a lot of things going on next year, and goings-on at Gordon are going to be great. The past is behind us, and all that turmoil is behind us. Our revenue next year is expected to go up a slight amount to a little over $900,000. Our operating income, or in this case, loss, is going to increase a slight amount, be in the neighborhood, which brings me to the same, the line, and it's the same line that we all have, that Elloa before me had, and that's the importance of annual giving. And speaking to the public who hope are watching this, please give. You really are a lifeblood. It's very much an essential part of the operation of Gordon, and we're planning on substantially the same amount of money next year with a modest decrease in the, in the net cash flow. So with that, thank you very much for your support, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. It's been great.
Questions?
I would make a comment, if I may. Actually, I happened to be visiting Gordon with Brenda, maybe 10 days ago now, Brenda, or two weeks or whatever, and she noted that on, as we were walking through the theater, the set for HMS Pinafore, performed by the college, was there. And so Frank and I, my husband and I, decided to take one of our granddaughters, and we sat in the front row. She fell in love with Josephine, the lead, and Buttercup. It was a fantastic performance. For those of you who like Gilbert and Sullivan, it was, it was as good a rendition as I've ever seen. Sitting in the front row with my granddaughter at this extraordinary stage was a really, it was a memorable experience for us, and I think for her, she didn't blink, and at the intermission, I said, you don't, you know, we could go now, and she said, there's more? So, you know, we stayed for the whole thing, and I think, I think we have a thespian in the family, so we're just waiting for her to be old enough to qualify for Pasta. It is a, if you have not been to a performance in that, in that, in that space, I can't strongly enough urge you to do so because it is really breathtaking, including the murals on the, on the, what, north wall, and seats were comfortable. There, there's wheelchair spots, so, you know, anybody, anybody with a disability can be there. It is, it feels like you've done everything right in that space, and I really, I applaud the board, I applaud Brenda.
Thank you. I didn't mention that. We gutted, we gutted the theater.
Yeah.
Right down to the walls. Everything.
It's, I mean, I could go on and on. I'll stop, but it was a great place to, great, great place to experience a theater with children. Really wonderful.
Other comments? Well, I'll just say, as I usually do when the subject of Gordon comes up, because it's sort of near and dear to my heart, unbelievable job of shepherding and sort of stewarding, if that's a word, it's probably not a verb, but this, this ship from, you know, really from a very rocky, almost rocky grave to just thriving and prospering, and maybe you strategically didn't talk about the balance sheet either, but it's extremely healthy. Let's just leave it at that.
It's better than it was. Damn me with faint praise, George.
That's what I was going to say. That's a low bar. But, but most importantly, with, you know, the big capital campaign having been so successful, as with Elloa, these, these facilities and resources depend on the community's donations to really continue to thrive. That's the, that's where the operating money comes from. And so just because there's a cash balance that looks really healthy at Elloa, or there's a nice endowment now, thank heavens, at Gordon, that's not the money that they live on. They, that, the money that the, that the annual events and activities depend on really does come from people's donations and their generosity, and it's that time of the year again, so please remember Elloa, Gordon, Ragdale, all of the city's, you know, fabulous cultural resources that have been developed over the years as you go through your year-end charitable thinking. And that's all I have to say.
Any other comments or questions? Anyone from the public? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the Gordon Community Center budget.
So moved.
No second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Pandalian?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Congratulations, and I'll add my comments to George's, which is, you know, you've done an extraordinary job. You know, it's, it's hard to imagine, when you look at projects like Gordon and Forest Park, it seems like one day they're off and the next day they're on, but the time and the, and the amount of effort and the amount of energy and the amount of sacrifice that so many people have made to get those projects to where they are today, so that they can be vital and alive and a part of what this community's all about. We owe you, the board and Brenda, you and your team, a tremendous debt of gratitude. So thank you for all the great work you've done.
Thank you for calling out Brenda. Thank you for calling out Brenda. She's, she's been great. And the board chairman, Blair Nagel and Mark Fennelly have been great, too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, all.
Next item on the agenda, determination of an estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated from property taxes for the 2015 calendar year in accordance with the Truth and Taxation Statute, establishment of a public hearing date for the 2015 tax levy, and consideration of an ordinance establishing the 2015 levy first reading, presented by Elizabeth Halib, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor for the day, and City Council members. The next three items on the agenda were the subject of considerable discussion at the Finance Committee meeting last Monday evening. But we are bringing these items to the City Council this evening for consideration of first reading. First item, of course, is the 2015 property tax levy. And I think it's important for those who may be in attendance or may be viewing the meeting on TV to understand the context within which the city is considering the tax levy this year. And that is the potential implications of the state budget. As we discussed last week, the state's fiscal year actually began on July 1st. But more than four months into their fiscal year, we know that they do not yet have an approved budget for this fiscal year. The concern is that as more and more time goes by, the state will have less time in this fiscal year to make up the shortfalls of revenue that exist. We know that last year's budget included 12 months of the higher income tax that rolled back January 1st, 2015. So that is of particular concern. Revenues that are distributed to municipalities in the state of Illinois, three significant revenue sources have been frozen and are no longer being remitted to the City of Lake Forest and other municipalities in Illinois. Those are the motor fuel tax, the local portion, local use tax, and E-911 revenue. For the City of Lake Forest, those three revenue sources alone combine for approximately $1 million per year in the city's budget. It is hopeful, we are hopeful, that once the state adopts a budget, those shortfalls and those withheld revenues will be paid retroactively to municipalities. But we do not know that to be the case for sure. In addition, there have been several bills introduced in Springfield regarding property tax frees on taxing districts in the state of Illinois. They have not been approved to date. We anticipate those bills to be reintroduced in Springfield. And so the city could very well be looking at a property tax freeze. The bills that we've seen introduced so far have affected both the 2016 and 2017 levies. So those would be freezes that could potentially affect Lake Forest over the next two years after this levy. And finally, the income tax distributions. We know that Governor Rauner's proposed budget includes a 50% reduction in income tax distributions to municipalities. Whether that will come to fruition or whether it will be somewhere in between 0 to 50%, we don't yet know. But the 50% reduction proposed would amount to nearly $1 million per year to the City of Lake Forest. So we continue to monitor Springfield and the state budget deliberations. But of course, we don't know yet what effect decisions in Springfield may have on the city. We did talk about several different tax levy options last week with the Finance Committee. We were asked to provide a couple additional options. But, but the one that is presented for consideration to the City Council this evening is a modification of option four that was presented last week. This is a summary of that. It involves a 2.93% increase in the tax levy over last year's in total, bottom line. And you can see here the different categories of the city's tax levy and what is proposed under this option. The general fund, as you know, relies heavily on property tax revenues for the general fund budget. More than 50% of the general fund revenues are property taxes. And you can see that that line, a line item is proposed to increase 2.9%. Pension funds in general, they are included, all three pension funds are included, non-public safety, police pension and fire pension, in aggregate, are proposed to increase 2.27%. And then we have several line items under that related to recreation and parks, special recreation, and the library, because the library is included in the city's tax levy as well. So you can see those line items and the proposed adjustments over last year. Two structural changes for the City Council's consideration are highlighted in yellow, also discussed last week. And that includes the movement of a portion of the debt service levy up to the agency funds for capital improvements. You'll see there's a $635,000 reduction in the bond fund category, offset by a $635,000 increase for capital improvements. For now, that $635,000 would be used to abate debt service. But eventually, as those bonds are paid off, that would provide a pay-as-you-go line item in the tax levy to fund the five-year capital improvement program and reduce the reliance on debt for funding capital improvements in the future. The second structural change is the addition of a line item for recreation and parks specific purpose. And that is proposed for $125,000. So that would be a new line item designated for specific purposes within recreation and parks. For now, that, some of that discussion is related to the golf course. So the next slide, any questions on that summary? Otherwise, I think one of the more frequent questions relate to the impact of the tax levy proposal on an average home. We use $800,000 as the average home in Lake Forest. Based on forecasted EAVs provided by Lake County, that would, the proposed levy increase of 2.93% would result in an increase of $91 on an average homeowner's tax bill. And that's about 2.69%. And that would include both the city and library portion, which together make up about 23% of the total tax bill. So again, that option is presented. The tax levy ordinance is included in your packet. And we are asking that the City Council consider first reading approval of that. But obviously, modifications can be made to that for final approval December 7th. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Elizabeth?
I have one.
Just a quick one.
Oh, sorry. Elizabeth, I know we've often heard that we are amongst the lowest taxes, property taxes on the North Shore. And I know that you provided us on more than one occasion with some, with data and a list. If we go ahead and approve this tax levy, where will that leave us on that list approximately?
It's hard to guess what others will do, but I will say that we are currently the lowest tax rate in Lake County. And there is a pretty significant margin between the first and second. So with an increase of 2.93%, it's not anticipated that we would move beyond that. It's possible, depending on what other communities do. But again, there is a pretty significant margin between Lake Forest and the second lowest.
So it's safe to say that we would remain one of the lowest, if not the lowest?
Yes.
On the North Shore?
Correct.
Or the, or in, or in Lake County?
Lake County, yes.
Michelle?
One of the things that I think everyone struggles with is the state issue. And when I do an analysis and I don't have certainty around an issue, I generally have three cases: an expected case, an up case, and a down case. Would you attach probabilities to those three of getting, of getting 80% of what the state collects on our behalf? What's your expected case that we get 80% within a, I'll, I'll put a timeframe on it, within a six-month period?
I think, given the size of the budget gap in Springfield, I would be surprised to see Lake Forest retain 80% of the existing level of state shared revenues going forward. That would surprise me.
So that's a less than 50% probability?
Yes. And I would defer to see if Bob agrees with that. But I would be surprised to retain 80%.
Yeah, I think, think about this as in two chunks. One is the money that they are currently collecting and holding, and then future dollars going down the road. I think there might be enough pressure because of, I think, the likelihood of a property tax freeze, that they will release all the monies that they've collected to this point, or 80% of them to this point. But I think I would put it in the 50 to 75% range going forward next year for the reasons that Elizabeth expressed. Now, they may couch that and say it's temporary, but I would plan on it going forward, that those dollars are going to be limited.
Put a dollar amount to that conversation that you folks had. Is it, are we talking 1,600, or rather, 160,000, or no, 80% of $2 million?
Well, we get about 1.9 million in income tax revenues, about 500,000 in motor fuel tax revenues, just under 400,000 in use tax revenues, and over $100,000 in E-911 revenues. So those combine for about $3 million a year to the City of Lake Forest alone.
The scenario that you guys were playing, I somehow got lost in the, what was the predicted outcome in terms of revenue loss? Absolute dollar amount?
My, what I was saying is I would be surprised to retain 80% of that, which is 2.4 million. That, that would surprise me. So that would mean a loss of 600,000 per year. It could be more. And if that is combined with a property tax freeze, it also limits the city's ability to generate revenue from other sources. So there's a compounding effect.
And the option that we're considering before us today makes up for 200,000 of that. Is that correct?
Yes, approximately 200,000, right.
And to add to that, some of those structural changes that were highlighted in yellow, and I'm, I'm asking a question here to clarify my understanding, are specifically being done with a view toward the possibility of a property tax freeze, where we are, you know, we then would be in the situation of we've had a property tax freeze, we've been living under a self-imposed tax cap. And by moving some of these line items around, it gives us a little more flexibility going forward to make up some, but probably not all, of the difference that Elizabeth is, is describing. Is that a fair?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. Alderman Pandeleon is correct. And that is the transfer of the 635 up above this subtotal line. Because if there is a property tax freeze, it would be placed on this number, because the bonds have already been issued. And, and so there, you know, is a, an expectation. And typically, a tax freeze will not affect debt that has already been issued. And so the thought process is that by moving 635 or some number from here to here, that base becomes larger, which provides a little added flexibility going forward.
And to follow on that with a little additional question, since we became a home rule community and as part of the, of the home rule referendum that was passed, a commitment was made by the City Council to live within the tax cap that is imposed on non-home rule communities throughout the country, or throughout the state. Because there was a concern that the reason we were doing home rule was to raise everybody's taxes. And it gave us the ability to do that. So as an antidote to that concern, the City Council concluded that it would commit, and this was now, what, 10 years ago, almost, to live under that cap that, as if we were not a home rule community. And to date, we have always abided by that commitment. And I believe this proposal continues to abide by that commitment. Am I, am I correct in saying that?
The ordinance provides that with a three-fourth majority vote, if certain conditions exist, then that cap can be exceeded. That includes capital improvements. That includes impacts by the state on revenue sharing. That has an impact on the city's budget. Legal requirements, bona fide emergencies. So there are certain conditions in the ordinance that provide the ability to exceed the cap.
But in this case, are we proposing to exceed the cap?
Yes.
We are. And where, where on this page is that happening?
We're doing it in a couple places. We're doing it here in the general fund, where that would, under the tax cap, be 0.8%. Police pension, which meets a legal requirement, but that is exceeding 0.8%. And then, of course, here with this new line item, that's a new revenue source. So here, you would see typically 0.8% plus the new construction, strictly in compliance with the tax cap.
And what would that percentage be?
I think it was 1.48%, I think.
But within, within the policies that have been discussed and vetted over the years, we, there are some exceptions that you touched on, legal requirements to fund, i.e. the pension plans is one of them.
Right.
And so we are with, we are staying within the boundaries of those exceptions, correct?
Yes.
Within the ordinance.
Right, within the ordinances that have been passed over the years.
Correct.
So.
But we are exceeding the 0.8, yes, with the 2.27. Which I would like to say...
Jack, can you get closer to the microphone? They can't hear you.
Even on here. I'm not even on here. I'm sorry.
Oh, there you go.
I said, but, yeah, we are, is, I believe, exceeding that, the 0.8 with the 2.27. I would like to say, I'm okay with that. Because I think we have to cover off, at least, if that, if we're going to have a six, let's say, let's assume, let's assume that you and Michelle were correct, and we have a $600,000 shortfall. We're covering off, at least in the general fund here, 200 of that, of that 600. And I'm going to vote for this if, if everybody else, unless there's something else that comes to the forefront, which I don't understand. I would like to say, however, though, that I am concerned about tax creep. And if this shortfall does not occur, I would hate to see us spend that 200,000 and kind of roll that into everyday spending and not just something that is extracurricular. I can't think of a better word than that. So I would like to somehow, I don't know where, what box you put that in, Elizabeth, but if you could find a box for that and everybody else was okay for. I mean, I think it should be sacrosanct, unless something absolutely, absolutely happens.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yep.
Mike?
Question for George and Elizabeth. So, you know, we're home rule. And other than we made a pledge not to exceed the cap, we could exceed the cap. What, what, we all know, and we've discussed this publicly, that the line's going to cross several years out, and it's coming closer and closer.
One year out.
Where our expenses are going to exceed our revenues.
One year out.
Okay. So what's going to be, just hypothetically, what's going to happen to all these other municipalities who are not home rule, who are probably in the same boat because the pension funds are the big debacle? Are they going to become insolvent? Are we going to see one municipality after another declaring bankruptcy, defaulting on their bonds, or just cutting services back to the bone where they offer no services?
I'm not going to speak for what they'll all do, but it's a serious problem, and we're very fortunate. We are very, very fortunate to be in a position to have any options here.
I think, Alderman Adelman, I think all of the above, I guess, would be my, my best answer to your question. Because we have seen, you know, the City of Lake Forest was one of the first communities involved with the municipal partnering initiative. In first year or two that we did it, there were very few communities that were coming together to share, you know, contracts for road resurfacing or hydrant paving, or whatever the case might be. Now, I just attended a meeting a couple of weeks ago. I think there were 37 communities participating. So I think every community is out there looking for ways to partner and do things differently. I will say that I think Lake Forest is in a much better financial position than most of those communities are. And I think that some of those are going to see some very serious changes to the way that they provide service within their community, because they are much like we are in that 70% of their operating cost is personnel. And so when they have a shortfall of whatever the dollars might be, they don't have an option other than in the areas of personnel to cut back. So I think there are going to be some very tough decisions made by communities across the state. And I think they've, over the last couple of years, they've relied upon what limited reserves they have to avoid making some of those cuts. And I think they've reached a point where they can't avoid those any longer. And I think that's really what you're hearing. I mean, the other day, I was just hearing from people that they don't have the money to purchase road salt yet. And it's waited, you know, they... to purchase road salt yet, and it's waited, you know, they wait every year until they have their MFT funding, and they don't have their MFT funding. So it's gonna be real interesting to see what happens when the first snow falls, and some of these communities don't have any salt. And I don't know, Elizabeth, what you're hearing from finance directors.
Yeah, I've heard the same thing. Um, and many are struggling with the police and fire pension levies this year because of the change in mortality table, which is increasing the levy requirement there, and so they're doing that within a tax cap and a potential freeze over the next two years. It is getting dire.
Yeah.
Thought that comes to mind is if a lot of the municipalities can't purchase their salt, the vendors are gonna be long on salt, and maybe we can stockpile in a cheaper way. That's number one, but number two-
We're not long on extra cash.
Mike Thomas was thinking the same thing in the back of the room.
I, I think Mike cornered the market two years ago, for God's sake.
But also, I mean, the, the times coming where we may have to consider farming out uh, our garbage pickup and cutting back from two days to one day.
Right.
Or just biting the bullet and having to renege on our promise not to exceed the cap. I mean, that's something we really need to have the residents thinking of, so that we can take a pulse on what the direction the community wants to go, but sooner or later, something's gotta give.
Somewhere you're gonna run out of opportunities to outsource and sharing services and different things, and, you know, we've gotta create flexibility in the face of a potential, uh, property tax freeze.
I also think it's unrealistic, um, for us all as residents to expect and count on a certain level of service that we certainly get here in Lake Forest, and, um, to also expect that our property taxes will never go up. I, I just don't think that's realistic, and, um, and George and Elizabeth can probably speak to this, can definitely speak to it this better than I can, but, you know, I, I don't know what our alternatives are. Um, we don't have that many means, um, um, by, by, by which to do this, and, and, and we certainly don't wanna do anything risky, or, or, you know, in, in, you know, do anything that's, um, not, not safe and sound. So I think, you know, if you, if you expect a certain level of service, at, at some point in time, it's realistic to expect that your taxes may go up.
Well, I, two, two observations on that front. First of all, the fact that the state may impose as a grand bargain, quote unquote, which is no bargain at all, uh, a, a tax, a property tax freeze in exchange for, quote unquote, in exchange for a property, or a, an income tax increase, um, that's not a, that's, that's a bargain, that's a three-way deal, and they're only including two of the people in the three-way deal. Um, the fact of the matter is, the state does not collect any property taxes. So for them to put a property tax freeze on costs them nothing, but it scores political points with the, with the voters, because they think, oh, good, my property taxes aren't gonna go up, so that's a, that's a quid pro quo for my income taxes going up at the state level. That creates, you know, fundamental issues at the, at the community level, because at the same time as, as Elizabeth mentioned, mortality tables for the police and fire are being lengthened, in other words, the expectation of how long a pensioner is going to live is being made longer, uh, which means you have to fund more dollars into their pension, so pension costs go up, um, all those things are sort of set at the state level, and then they say, oh, by the way, you can't raise property taxes, uh, that's a, that's an impossible situation for us to be put in as a community, and, but it's a great political, it looks really great at the state level, because most people don't realize that it's robbing Peter to pay Paul. So that's, that's one point. Second point, and this is, this is, I think, and we've looked at this recent, recently enough to, to have seen, and I don't remember the exact number, but we looked at the risk, the potential cost to the community over an extended period of time of losing our AAA bond rating. And this is something that, um, is, it, it's underneath a lot of things, it doesn't come to the surface, it's not as obvious, but I wanna say about a year ago, we, 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 I think I asked to, to do the analysis to say, if we, if we were reduced, if our rating was reduced by one, two, or three notches, by the rate, you know, by S and P and Fitch and so forth, what would that cost the city over a, I think it was a twenty-year period?
Right.
And I don't remember the number, but it was many, many, many millions of dollars. Uh, I, I wanna say it was a couple of million dollars a year, just based on the debt we have in place now. And, um, so that's, that's kind of an insidious thing that we, it's very easy not to pay attention to, because you don't see it right there in front of your nose, but over an extended period of time, uh, very, very damaging to the city and to the, and to the residents. So that's a, a, that's kind of a line in the sand, I think, for us, or it needs to be, has always been a line in the sand in, in Lake Forest, as long as I've been involved in the government, and, and I think it needs to continue to be, and if we get to a point where there's no alternative, and our bond rating is at risk, uh, I, I think it's actually much more prudent to, to consider making some change, some more, you know, dramatic changes in the tax regime. And, and by the way, back to Mike's point, uh, the, right now, the lines of revenue and expense are looking like they are going to cross in fiscal twenty seventeen, which is the next fiscal year after this one we're budgeting right now.
George, your, your comments about the AAA rating, um, go to a point that I would like to make, and, and I give particular praise to, to the finance staff and to City Manager Kylie for having this, I think, in front of the, the, the residents, certainly in front of the city council, which I think has long been planning. I mean, we've, we've been talking about when those lines cross, I know, for some time, and I haven't been around that long, but I know that the council has been looking at this for a long time. So nothing, other than the state, I mean, I think the state is frankly, in, I, I don't think we actually anticipated a no budget for months-on-end scenario. I think, I think as, as bad as things were, this is worse. Uh, I think we just don't know the implications, and the direct question that Michelle asked got a, a direct answer. Uh, whatever the down scenario was, I think that's the scenario that we probably, you know, at, at this point, I think all bets are off on actually even predicting. But I feel that we are in, Mike's, Mike's point about what are other municipalities doing, I think is a good one, we have been talking about a time of looking at this math very seriously for a long time. George, you, I, I laud you, I praise you for, 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 for leading this at the city council level. So I am reassured that we are not gonna be surprised by much. Um, I, I, as I say, the state stuff, which we have virtually no control over, uh, is, is shocking, frankly. But I think we are in, we're in strong position, and I think we will watch. I don't see any scenario that we wouldn't pay attention to that AAA rating. I think we, you know, the, I, I remember hearing about the, the analysis, and I think it's important, but we know how important watching the finances in this community are, and we will keep doing that. So I feel like we've, we've got a good team in place. I'm relatively reassured. Bob, I don't know if you're sleeping at night. I am at the moment. I suppose we could have a discussion that might change that, but, but, uh, but I think we're, we're gonna have to play this out, we're gonna have to watch things even, even more closely than we have before at the, at the council level. I will say, I know that I have had conversations with constituents, we bring this up at every town hall meeting, this comes up, I think, at every ward meeting, but I think we wanna be sure that if our constituents are concerned and they have questions, ask us, let's talk about this. Nobody is trying to keep anything from the, from the residents, and on the one hand, I'm, as I say, I'm very confident in, in, in the good management that we will continue to apply. That said, things, as, as, as my fellow Ward one Alderman notes, things could change. And, um, people shouldn't assume that because we've been managed well forever, that it's just all gonna kind of work out. Things are likely to change.
And I think, proof I could, I'd, I'd add to that by saying that the community now needs to know that we're talking about this tonight for maybe twenty minutes, but we spent almost five hours-
Five hours.
Uh, on last Monday, uh, going through all the different scenarios, the different options, different possibilities. I, I think your point's a good one, that, um, we don't want surprises, we wanna be prepared. A couple bits of information, which you may or may not be aware, that there was legislation passed out of the House last week, freeing up the local government funds. Uh, unfortunately, that legislation is still yet to be introduced in the Senate, uh, which perhaps could harbor a possibility of a budget deal, uh, or could perhaps, perhaps be harboring simply more gridlock. Uh, but I think the thing we need to do is be prepared, and I think the community as well needs to know that we take our stewardship of the dollars that are paid to the city very seriously. Uh, each of us are taxpayers, each of us own property here, and we are impacted by this as well. But I think for the greater good, we need to do things that are smart and prudent, uh, and we can't be surprised. And I think, uh, I would encourage strongly to support this, 'cause I believe it's the best thing for the community. Any other questions?
May I make a motion for approval?
You may. Vic, do we need to read all three items? Are all three?
We can have it in one motion.
Okay.
As you're talking about each of items.
The action, mhm. So, uh, let's do this. I, um, I'm gonna ask the council for a motion to establish a determination of an estimate of the amount of revenue to be generated from the property taxes for the twenty fifteen calendar year in accordance with the Truth in Taxation statute. Number two, establish December seven, twenty fifteen, as the public hearing date for the tax levy, if applicable, and number three, grant the first reading of an ordinance establishing the twenty fifteen tax levy.
I would note that based on the option that's before you, the hearing will not be applicable.
Correct. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldak?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Panaleon?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Aylman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Again, I, I think my other comment would be that, Elizabeth, you and your staff have worked very hard in, in partnership with Bob to look at various options and look at all the alternatives. You know, as you've mentioned, George mentioned others, we are also severely hamstrung by the pension issue. And I think more than anything, that has an impact on us, and we are gonna continue to fulfill our obligations on that, uh, but then the question becomes, where did those dollars come from? So. Next item on the agenda, approval of an ordinance abating the twenty fifteen tax levies for various GO alternate revenue bonds. First reading presented by Elizabeth Al.
Thank you, Mayor. On a related, but much easier topic, um, we're actually talking about reducing property taxes in this item. This table shows all of the existing bond issues that the city has outstanding, and what that levy amount would be on a gross basis. You can see our debt service cost next year, about five point one million. However, for a variety of reasons, um, the city abates some of those levies each year because the debt service is actually paid from alternate revenue sources, and you can see what those alternate revenue sources are, and how they relate to individual issues. Golf revenues pay a portion of debt service, water pays a significant portion, the half a percent home rule sales tax pays a portion, and then we have two bond issues for which we receive a partial rebate from the federal government each year, offsetting part of the interest costs. So each year, we ask the council to consider abatement ordinances, reducing the debt service levy for those alternate revenue sources, and you can see what that net levy, the resulting net levy is, of, so we bring about three million dollars down from alternate revenue sources, and that debt levy would be just over two point one million dollars for next year. I would note that not included on this table is the six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar abatement that we just talked about. Um, once that, uh, levy is approved in December, we'll bring you a fifth abatement ordinance in January, abating that six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that will actually be paid from the capital improvement line item above. Um, so that would be yet to come. So there are before you four abatement ordinances, uh, reducing the debt service levies for the two thousand ten B, the two thousand ten C, the two thousand eleven A, and the two thousand eleven B issues, and those are presented, again, for first reading approval this evening.
Can I just, I'm gonna a- try to ask a couple of questions that may clarify this for people, because it, the language is not familiar to most, to most people that aren't involved in these kinds of things. It wasn't familiar to me when I first got involved. So we have general obligation bonds that are outstanding. So they've been issued with the full faith and credit of the city of Lake Forest as their backup. So that's, that's where we, that's the starting point. So if, to the extent that we have general obligation bonds, we need to budget in the general fund for debt service on those general obligation bonds. Mike, am I okay so far?
Hmm.
But some of these bonds, water bonds, golf course bonds, um, uh, the rebate, there's a TIF district, generate, there's revenue coming in to support those bonds, in addition to the city's backstop of the general obligation. So to the extent that we can pay those out of revenue, we don't have to spend, you, we would put them in the budget, but we wouldn't spend the money, because it's being paid for out of the revenues. Water is the simplest one for everybody to understand, I think. So this process is saying, okay, we have to budget for this, but then we're gonna abate that part of the budget, because it's being paid for from revenues from the water plant, for example.
Right, and I think the important point is that, whereas the city would have the option of issuing, issuing water revenue bonds, where there is no full faith and credit, and there is no general obligation tied to it, they would be issued at a higher interest rate. And so this mechanism, issuing it as general obligation debt, and then abating it, provides an overall cost savings, because it's done at a lower interest rate, because the full faith and credit of the city is pledged.
As opposed to the unpredictable water revenues, which we've certainly experienced the last two years.
Right.
So, and a lender is going to say, because that stream of revenue depends on the weather, and how much people use their sprinklers, I'm not so sure about that, so I'm gonna charge you a higher interest rate, because there's more risk.
Right.
So.
These actually have two levels of support, the general obligation-
Right.
-taxing power and the revenue stream.
It's like a guarantee.
Well, it's like, like, it's called a double-barrel bond, right? So it's really highly coveted in the municipal bond market.
Any other questions for Elizabeth? Clarifications? Anyone from the public? If not, I'll ask for a motion for approval of the ordinances abating the twenty fifteen tax levies for various GO alternate revenue bond issues. First reading, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldak?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Panaleon?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Aylman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item, consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule and ordinances adopting new fees related to development activity and Lake Forest Fitness Center membership. First reading, again, presented by Elizabeth Al.
Thank you very much. Uh, again, a subject of discussion at last week's finance committee meeting. I apologize for the sixty-five pages of material in your packet, um, but it does support , um, the three ordinances presented this evening for consideration by the city council. In summary, uh, recommendations are submitted each year by operating departments related to fees. Um, we have a comprehensive fee schedule, which was included in your packet, um, and we've delineated those changes so that you can clearly see what is proposed for adjustment next year. We anticipate first reading this evening and second and final approval by the city council on December seventh. Included in the fee schedule, Exhibit A, I just wanna note that we did make a change to the structure of that schedule this year, we talked about that last year, but we've added a column for the code section to provide a better and clearer linkage between the city code and the fee schedule. So you now have the city code section listed on the fee schedule that discusses that particular fee, so we've, uh, strengthened the nexus between those two documents. In the Exhibit A to your ordinance adopting the fee schedule, any changes in fees proposed are highlighted in yellow, any new fees proposed are highlighted in orange, and then there was some clarification based on the review of the city code and the fee schedule. Anything I, uh, highlighted in green is not a change, but it either is an addition to the fee schedule, because the fee was previously listed in the code, or there was a difference between the code and the fee schedule, so we were just getting that rectified. So those don't, um, result in any changes in fees, it was just a clarification for this year. Um, highlighted in red is the section on water fees. That will be considered by the finance committee in January, and then we hope to bring ordinances to you in February for first and final reading related to water rates, so those are, will come later. As a result of all the changes that you see, we've just, um, provided in summary form what the projected budget impact would be. In the general fund, it's projected to generate forty-four thousand dollars in additional revenue, golf fund, very small, just over five thousand, parks and recreation, uh, just a little over fifteen thousand dollars- Parks and Recreation, just a little over $15,000, including the changed fees highlighted in yellow, as well as the new fees related to the fitness center highlighted in orange. And then there are two modest new fees for development activity, expected to generate about $1,200 in additional revenue for the general fund. So, again, you've got those summarized. Any new fees require a separate ordinance, so you actually have three ordinances before you, an ordinance adopting the comprehensive fee schedule, an ordinance adopting new fees related to development activity, and then an ordinance adopting a new fee for the fitness center, which is just a one-month membership, which is new. I'll be happy to answer any questions related to those ordinances.
Questions for Elizabeth?
I just have a comment. I do think that fees are a lever that we should be using perhaps more generously. There's a, a deep concern about fairness, and I think that's justifiable, but we do live in a community with a lot of great qualities, two organizations of which we heard about today, and we've certainly heard about all of them over, over time. But I, I do think that we need to be more liberal in our use of fee increases as a means to pay for things, and at least to get to a level that approaches breakeven or even makes a profit and, and provides for future services. So, I just take the opportunity to state that.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone from the public? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve the fee schedule and ordinances adopting new fees related to the development activity and Lake Forest Fitness Center membership. First reading, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. Elizabeth, you can finally sit down.
One comment I'd like to make. George, please, one. Sorry to, sorry to belabor the point, but something occurred to me, and I forgot to mention it before. Bob Kylie made a comment earlier on, and we were talking about the budget situation with the state. And he made a comment about cities and towns not having received their motor fuel tax distributions from the state and therefore not having any money to buy salt with. There was a, there were a number of comments made about sort of the long-term thoughtful stewardship of the city that, that we've all benefited from, from our forbears who sat up here. And that, that tradition continues, and I think a great example of that, it's a small thing that nobody would probably ever hear about if I didn't bring it up. But last year, we, we were socked with, if I recall correctly, about a 50% increase in the cost of, of salt. And we found a couple of ways around that. We reduced it. We probably got it down to a 35% increase, but it was still a massive increase in the cost of salt. And part of that was because we were, because of the way the bidding process worked and our collaboration with the state and the county, it all happened about now. You know, we would be in the market with all the other municipalities buying salt today, right before the winter. Well, that's a problem because that's, everybody's trying to buy the salt, there wasn't great supply, therefore the price shot up. Well, what we did this year as part of our budget was to budget, if I recall correctly, about $200,000, Mike, is that, is that fair? To reinforce our salt bay, which sounds, that's a very prosaic thing, but the fact is that allows us to go into the market in March and April and buy up any leftover salt that people have. We're in the market alone without all this competition from other municipalities. It essentially allows us to hedge our salt costs. And we have, I, we're more than 50% of the entire season, maybe 75%? What, what's the? We currently have 80% of the salt we will need to get through a typical winter in the salt bay right now. And that's an example. We will be able to buy salt more efficiently at a lower price on into the future than any other community around here. And that's the kind of thing that, those are the, a lot of the small things, there are probably 20 other examples like that. But all of a sudden, now other communities are looking around going, whoops, how are we going to buy salt? It's going to snow next week. We're not in that situation. So, I just wanted to, that's just a really, really good example of things that are happening behind the scenes that the community and the, in general, voting population doesn't, wouldn't see, wouldn't appreciate, but they sure would be looking for answers if we didn't have salt to throw down over Thanksgiving weekend if it should happen to snow. But that's, that's my little speech for the night.
And if I can, I'll make one other comment. I don't know how many of you read an article in the Tribune yesterday about taxes and the impact the city's tax rate was going to have on, on the city of Chicago. And it specifically called out not just Lake County, not just the North Shore, it called out the lowest taxes of all municipalities across Chicagoland, and I believe we were tied for fourth. And so, again, something, you know, as we think about going forward and having to deal with the obligations and having to deal with maintaining a level of service that I think so many in this community have come to expect, we need to think about that as well. Next item on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. Anyone care to address the council on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to omnibus vote items. So, we have four this evening, as we always do. If any member of the council would like to take one separately, we'll do so. Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to approve at the end. Item number one, approval of the November 2, 2015 City Council meeting minutes. Number two, resolution of appreciation for Audit Committee Chairman Lucinda Bayer, Lucinda Bayer, I'm sorry. Consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board. First reading, if desired by the council, final approval. And number four, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. First reading, if desired by the council, final approval. Any Alderman care to take any of those items individually? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the omnibus.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Pandeleon?
Aye.
Alderman Newman?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Eight yeas, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thanks, Biddy. Number six, ordinances. We have no ordinances on the agenda this evening. Number seven, ordinances affecting code amendments. We also have none of those this evening. Item number eight, new business. The City of Lake Forest's current permitted hours of operation for the use of gasoline-powered lawn maintenance equipment, including but not limited to leaf blowers. And it'll be a presentation tonight by Jim Lockfear, who is our management intern. Jim, welcome. First maiden voyage tonight, right?
You are correct, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, for the day, and members of the City Council. And tonight, I will be presenting on lawn maintenance equipment, hours of operation, and noise generated from leaf blowers. So, as the city code is currently written, it is unlawful to cause or make loud noise through the operation of lawn maintenance equipment, including but not limited to lawn mowers, tractors, gasoline-powered leaf blower equipment before 7:30 a.m. on weekdays, 8:00 a.m. on Saturdays, and 10:00 a.m. on Sundays and holidays. It is also unlawful to operate this equipment after 7:30 p.m. on all days except as authorized by the city manager. And it's also important to note here that this restriction does not apply to any of the city's golf courses. I have here just a little bit of background information about City Council decisions, which are included in your packet, so I won't go through each bullet point here, but I will point out that the City of Lake Forest first passed an ordinance in 1991 that restricted those hours of operation. And then, this topic was last brought before a City Council in 2002, when a draft of the city's contracting, contractor licensing ordinance was brought before the council. And in this draft, a leaf blower ban was incorporated. And after much discussion, City Council decided that they cannot support that draft as presented with that leaf blower ban in place. Here's a chart of some nearby city, city and village regulations. If you look, Lake Forest is at the top, again, with our hours of operation. Similar to Lake Forest, Lake Bluff is Lake Bluff. They also have set, a set time of hours of operation. And then you have communities like Lincolnshire, Libertyville, Northfield, and Deerfield, who have no regulations in place, but then also communities like Highland Park and Glencoe that do have gas-powered leaf blower bans in place that take place over the summer months. Part of this presentation, staff wanted to send out a survey to get some licensed landscaper feedback, and so a survey was sent out to 38 of those licensed landscapers that operate within the City of Lake Forest. Eight responses were received. And first, zero of the eight firms were opposed to moving up that stopping time from 7:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. 50% of the firms were opposed to moving that time up to 6:30 p.m. On weekends and holidays, zero of the eight firms were opposed to moving the stopping time to 7:00 p.m. One of the eight firms said it would be opposed to that time moving up from 7:30 to 6:30 p.m. Every firm did oppose moving the start time up from 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. On Saturdays, 50% of the firms opposed moving the start time up to 8:30 a.m., 75% opposed moving that time up to 9:00 a.m., and 25% of the firms opposed moving up the start time to 10:30 a.m. on Sunday. And also, one, the last question in the survey asked if firms would be opposed or not to a ban on leaf blowers on Sundays, and no firm opposed that, but for the most part, the reason behind that was because the firms weren't working on Sunday. So, and an important aspect, just to consider there is residents, and when they might do landscaping work. And so, the takeaways from this survey were that, for the most part, firms were not opposed to moving up that end time, especially to 7:00 p.m. There was a little opposition to that 6:30 p.m. end time, especially on the weekends. There was, again, very little opposition, just that one firm, but there was some strong opposition to moving that start time up from 7:30 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. And so, the purpose of this presentation tonight, no council action is needed. We are just looking for discussion and a little bit of staff direction. So, we'll open up now to any questions that you might have.
Questions for Jim? Mike?
Does this apply to individuals who have leaf blowers?
It does.
We're the city of trees. How can we? We've got more leaves than any other community.
I don't think we should solve non-problems.
Okay. Any other questions? Any comments?
No, no discussion about insisting that, say, electric devices be used as opposed to gas-powered?
That was also included in the survey, what firms, if they do incorporate any type of electronic equipment, in which I believe, I would have to go back and check, but every firm did say they do, but they try, especially on the larger properties, do stay away from using it, just because of the fact it is a little bit more inefficient than the gas-powered equipment.
It's not as powerful.
Not as powerful.
Batteries run down.
Dragging around a cord or battery life is a little bit...
Pardon me. I have a, I have two gas ones, and then I have an electric one down south. And electric one's every bit as powerful as the gas, but it's every bit as noisy as a gas.
I heard that.
To Jack's point about solving non-problems, are, are we getting complaints or calls from, from residents? Is that, I mean, why is this before us for discussion tonight? Is it something that we're getting phone calls about?
I'll take responsibility for that. I, I have received complaints. You know, in, in the neighborhood I live in, the lots are not that big, but they're big enough that virtually everybody uses a landscaper. And it's, it is, it can be frustrating. It's 7:30 on a Saturday morning when you're...
Saturday morning.
And, and 7:30 on a Sunday morning, when you're thinking, gee, maybe I could actually get an extra half hour of sleep here, and the windows happen to be open because it was a nice evening, and all of a sudden, there's somebody under your window with a gas-powered leaf blower. And I have gotten complaints. And so, I asked to take another look at this in light of environmental concerns with the gas-powered equipment, the availability of much improved electric equipment, and was, I mean, it's been 15 years?
Thirteen.
13 years since this was even discussed. It did, it's interesting. I thought some of the results were pretty interesting. I mean, a half an hour one way or the other could be very nice, you know, especially in the morning. I think less, less of an issue in the evening, although on a nice summer evening when you're having some people over and sitting on the patio or the deck, and the next-door neighbor's landscaper is there with six guys, all blowing stuff around with leaf blowers and lawn mowers, that can also be pretty irritating. So, that's why I asked that it be thought, looked at again. That's all.
I agree, a half, an hour can make a difference, especially on a, a weekend.
I have a question. Does the ban on blowing hot air after 7:30 apply to the council?
I think we have another minute here. We get to go till 8.
What about wood chipper?
Oh, God.
I got shut down once for having a wood chipper going. Of course, it was the middle of the Bulls playoffs when Georgian was leading the team. It was on a Sunday.
I think George just had a free evening tonight. What's the procedure for enforcement, like on a Sunday morning?
Yeah, that's the other question.
Nine o'clock.
I did talk to the police chief, and he said that generally what happens is they will respond if a resident calls. Unfortunately, people are five or 10 minutes before the start time, so by the time we get out there, it's legal at that point in time. But he said that we have very few police infractions, if you will, where we're writing citations and whatnot, because generally, landscapers know what the hours are. I think we have more problems with individual homeowners than the landscapers. That's why I think, from this standpoint too, I think going back to the point that, that Jim was making, I think the landscapers, their crews aren't out there at 6:30 or, or 7:00 o'clock at night. They're done. They're on their way back to the shop and so forth. So, they could care less if you shut it down earlier. I think they are really out there, they're the ones that are ready to go at 7:30 in the morning to get going.
Any other questions of Jim?
So, Jim, are you expecting follow-up from us? I mean, are you, are you, are we just going to kind of consider this discussed for, for a while?
For the next 13 years?
13 years?
Will you still be around, George?
Or are we going to recommend that we change the ordinance for, by the, I mean, it sounds like we got a lot of people who like that extra half an hour of sleep on the weekends.
If you want to give us some direction, whether it's do nothing or come back with some modifications to the hours, we could certainly do that. It's really the pleasure of the council.
And we can spend a little more time on it now? You can reach out to Jim directly, either way.
I mean, how much can you fine-tune the hours with the data that we're getting back here, unless we resurvey the public somehow? And I think it'd be better spent to educate the public, because I think you're right, it's the individual homeowners that are the problem early Saturdays and Sundays.
Sounds like a dialogue topic, perhaps.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Also included in your packet is a drafted etiquette guideline, and included on that too would be the hours of operation listed, something that we could hand out to the licensed landscapers when they come in to renew.
Great.
Make sure.
Anything else? Okay. Jim, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, additional items for council discussion. Anything else? Omnibus?
Yes. For our temporary mayor this evening, I'd like to thank you for being here, but I'd also like to say I'm sorry you were here on an evening where we're discussing budget and stuff that might be more mundane to a middle schooler. You should have been here for Costco or Whole Foods, or the municipal services debate, but thank you for being here nevertheless.
Thank you for having me. This is an awesome thing.
I'd like to say we give her all a hand. She did a great job. Any other items? Any other items? If not, I would ask, Madam Mayor, would you mind asking for an adjournment?
May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we adjourn.
All right.
We adjourn.
Gonna get a quick run.
Have a good night, we'll see everyone at the tree lighting on the 27th.
Feel like money at stake or anything.
You should've been here with John Looby and, and Rob Palmer.
The poor thing's sitting there. Having competition to see who could.